Happy New Year, good evening, and welcome to this Prior Lake City Council meeting of Wednesday, January 4th, 2023. If you would please stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. It's so wonderful to see a full council chambers. The first item on our agenda is to deliver the oath of office with two recently elected council members. So we're going to go ahead and do this off to the side. So if I could, please have Mr. Victor Lake join me over on the side, as well as family members that you'd like to come forward. Okay, well, go ahead and have the microphone here. So if I could, Victor, raise your right hand, please. And feel free to, and if you would, repeat after me. I, Victor Lake.
I, Victor Lake.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of office.
And will faithfully discharge.
Execute and discharge.
The duties of office.
Of city council member of the city of Prior Lake, Scott County, Minnesota.
Of the city council member of the city of Prior Lake, Scott County, Minnesota.
According to law and the best of my judgment.
According to law and the best of my judgment.
Ability and understanding.
Ability and understanding.
And this I do under the penalties of perjury.
And this I do under the penalties of perjury.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Kim Churchill. I, Kimberly Churchill, do solemnly swear.
I, Kimberly Churchill, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And will faithfully execute and discharge.
And will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member of the city of Prior Lake, Scott County, Minnesota.
Of the office of.
Of city council member.
Of city council member of the city of Prior Lake, Scott County, Minnesota.
According to law and the best of my judgment.
According to law and the best of my judgment.
Ability and understanding.
Ability and understanding.
And this I do under the penalties of perjury.
And this I do under the penalties of perjury.
Congratulations and welcome. And thank you. Welcome and nice to have you. That brings us to item three on our agenda, which is the public forum. Public forum is that opportunity for those members of the community that would like to come before the Prior Lake City Council and share with us what's on your mind. You're going to be limited to no more than five minutes. At the four-minute mark, I'll go ahead and hold up a single finger just to say you have one minute remaining. If you would, please bring your comments to a close. The only items that are not to be shared at the public forum are any items for which a hearing has been scheduled and/or for which a hearing has taken place. And the reason for that is, of course, to ensure that all the testimony is received at the same time. With those two exceptions, I invite, I see we have five individuals that have signed up, Mr. Wesley Stefan, to please come before us. And if you would, sir, again, state your name and address for the record, and we look forward to your testimony or your comments this evening. Mr. Stefan, oh, there's a green button at the base of the microphone. It's probably red. Go ahead and press it.
Electronics, very good. So my name is Wesley Stefan. I live at 2350 Raymond Avenue in Jordan, Minnesota. And I'd like to acknowledge Mayor Briggs, Jason Weddle, the city manager, and the rest of the city council members, especially the new ones that have just become duly sworn in. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce myself because I'm the president of the Spring Lake Association. And on behalf of the organization, I would also like to thank the city for your financial assistance in supporting our attempt to fix and approve, improve the boat access on Spring Lake. Based on information that we received from the watershed district, last year, we had two, over 2,000 boats that serviced that boat launch. As you probably are all aware, we've been in a number of drought years. 2022 is even worse than the first year. In order to get, due to the low water levels, it's created a lot of difficulties in getting boats to launch and retrieve their boats off the launch. The work that we've worked with Kling Brick Excavating and the DNR, we were able to remove a mound and fill a hole that was created mostly by power loading of boats. Unfortunately, it's not illegal to power load a boat, and there are possibly opportunities to create an ordinance to make that illegal, which would allow the sheriff's department to enforce it then. In regards to that, if these low water levels continue, additional steps will need to be taken in order to remedy this going forward. Right now, we're working with the Prior Lake Association, Adam Prohl, and Woody, to understand and coordinate our efforts in working with the DNR to improve this going forward. Hopefully, with the recent snowfall that we've had, that the water levels will come up and we'll have a very wet spring. I'm sure the farmers would appreciate that as well. In addition to this, I'd also like to thank the city, and especially the park supervisor, Greg. I apologize if I murder in his name, but it's Skolazek? Is that close?
Skolazek.
All right. Especially his crew for working with a dedicated group of members and residents on Spring Lake in the removal of buckthorn and enhancing the trails that live in Raymond Park. His crew has also worked with the association in restoring the rain garden at the boat launch, which was in disrepair. In terms of, what we did there was remove all of the old weeds that were there, along with planting new native flowers and mulch, and Greg's crew was able to use their water truck to make sure those flowers didn't die due to the dry summer. I would encourage you to feel free to contact either myself or any of our board members in regards to any issues that you feel would impact Spring Lake going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stefan. And I also want to thank you for stepping forward and leading the Spring Lake Association. So thank you so much for your service to the community. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kevin Basart, Mr. Basart. And again, if you would, sir, name and address for the record, and we look forward to your comments.
Yep. Name, Kevin Basart, located 14112 Bayview Circle, Prior Lake. I just wanted to say thank you for your time to listen to our concerns, listen to collective concerns from our neighborhood regarding the 42 reentry home. My wife and I have attended the previous Prior Lake City Board meeting and the week of Thanksgiving, as well as the other county board meetings, including on the 20th of September or December, and workshop regarding this home. It's clear, listening to the presentation, that we did not, were not listened to, and our concerns were not considered with the community, which have been voiced since late October. My wife and I have spent time, much like many of the residents, reviewing what little information the county has provided. And the initial research cited by the city after the November 1st neighborhood meeting stated that larger houses actually had fewer problems, so larger equal and better, related to contact disorder, aggression, and criminal activity. And then during the 20th county workshop, this research was no longer cited. They provided a study instead that quoted, "These programs function best with smaller group sizes." Upon reading that article that was provided, this specific quote was not found. So after reading all 40 pages, wasn't found in there. Rather, after reviewing the entire article, this was based more on a hypothesis statement from the author. So it really just inferred that smaller homes might allow for more resources, more resources per resident instead of larger homes. The home used in the example throughout the study was more of like an apartment-style housing rather than R1 zoning, single-family residents. And it is also noted important to note that the home was selected based on the structure and remodeling potential, not based on location or due diligence of the surrounding community. So yeah, it didn't include daycare, it didn't include parks closest transportation bus stop, which we don't know is a mile and a half from the residence. I'm just, I'm really concerned about the lack of communication and supporting data, for the most part. Since any supporting data that we have been given, once we actually read it, it says the complete opposite, or it just omits completely what was quoted in the first case. So collaboration, transparency, communication has occurred, and even I feel more fearful in how much worse it will get if this reentry home does open in this neighborhood. And again, these are sentiments I've said multiple times, but just want to be public record. I will keep coming, and it's, the feeling of the safety is something that's immeasurable. And I care about our neighborhood, and I want us to feel safe where we live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basart. Ms. Cassie Johnson.
Okay, next time we need a stool for short people. I'm Cassandra Johnson. I live at 14104 Hidden View Road Northeast, Prior Lake. Thank you for your time and your continued time and efforts of listening and hearing us. And I think I just wanted to call out two things of, a couple of things that we've heard over is about the lack of collaboration. I can't remember who you referenced, and I can't remember from the 20th meeting of who stated that the community involvement of being asked and involved. And I just would like to point out that this was never brought to us as an ask, or how do we partner with you? This is more of, this is what we're doing, kind of deal with it and figure it out and go on. And then the other thing I would like to just talk about is that the advisory committee that has been brought forward as an option, as of a quote-unquote "solution" to help we move forward. I come from a world of patient safety, high reliability organization, and if anyone has those types of concepts, psychological safety is huge. We've talked about the relationships between the city and the county and how sometimes they've been strained over the years with various projects. Ultimately, if you do not feel psychologically safe in raising your voice or your concern, it's not going to be heard. If you don't have an environment where you can be listened to and reciprocate it both ways, right, even when we don't agree, creating that psychological safety is needed. And that relationship has been massively strained between the neighborhood and the county. And so while this advisory council sounds like a great idea, it's pretty on paper. The reality of recreating and rebuilding that relationship, not saying that all relationships don't take effort, but in needed, but there's going to have to be some massive movement and steps forward in order to even create that psychological safety where that neighborhood person would be able to be, felt like they could be heard and understood, as well as listen to the other people bringing information back and having that trust. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Andrew Sterns.
Hello, I'm Andrew Sterns, 14060 Hidden View Road. Just a few things that kind of concern me about the reentry home. One, you know, there's individual that was watching a friend's kid and then a relative's kid, so three kids in her home. And the county shut her down, saying that you can't operate a daycare without a license. And you can't, and then there was no, like, oh, get licensed in the next few months, you know, keep, let these people still drop their kids off, let them still go to work, you can still do it, just get like, no, it was, had to shut down and then go through all the licensing process. And then she could reopen, which put a lot of stress on four families in our county and our neighborhood. And then there's some questions on this, you know, this is a four-person facility. And they keep quoting, like, research from the Rochester, New York, which is the ready, willing, and able. All those facilities are 20 to 50, somewhere 100-plus, where their first 30 days of the program, you don't leave the house very often. The next 30, or next two to four to six months, you're out in the community doing community service, like you're cleaning the roads, you're doing this, you know. It's a year program, 14-month program, before they're ready, willing, and able, you know. We're trying to do that with four people in 30, 60, 90 days. I mean, that doesn't make sense. I think of myself stripped naked and trying to restart in society. I'm supposed to save up first months, last months. Now I have to get to the county, to my UAs, do my UAs at my house, walk a mile and a half to the bus stop. I'm like, it's just, I don't feel like we're setting them up for success. You know, and I've worked with many ex-cons. I've spent 10 years in a camper industrial construction to be able to live in a neighborhood with vested community members that are a part of this neighborhood. I didn't do all that work in my early years, and, you know, and, you know, and I guess to all of a sudden be part of a experimental program, a four-person, I don't even, I guess nobody knows what to call it, so I'll just say a four-person place, you know, that gets to overlook, we're right down the hill from them, so they get to overlook my two-year-old, my four-year-old, and my seven-year-old grow up because they're supposed to be part of the community. You know, I could maybe get on board if it was that year 14-month program where any, and I'd even prefer the six, eight, 10 men, you know, just because now they have accountability, they're, they have a community inside the home. You know, here, there's never going to be a community inside the home. One's going to be going, one's going to be coming, and two have been there for two weeks, you know. And then it, to me, it's the short-term rental and, you know, so if they go to six months, if three of them fail out in the first, now you got one person in the house. All four of them fail out, now nobody can go back, start till six months, and now the home's vacant for four months, right? If it's a short-term rental, which I, nobody knows what it is. To me, it's either a daycare because there's staff coming every day to take care of them. It's a business, or I guess it's just four people renting a home. But anyway, yeah, you keep, oh, I only got one minute. Well, all right, I'm just gonna.
If you could bring your comments to a close.
Yeah, I can close right here, I guess. I just, you know, I really want to reiterate the fact that it's four people. We're trying to, we're spending a ton of money to try and rotate four people through a neighborhood up to, up to 30 a year going through that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. Jennifer Sterns.
Hello. I know all of you well. Good to see you and welcome, Councilman Lake. First off, I would like to recognize your leadership and communication with our community the past two and a half months. This has been an emotional issue, obviously, for many, and I acknowledge the difficult position. And but how it is being handled by the city of Prior Lake has been encouraging, so thank you for your efforts. Since October, we, the community, as well as the city council, have been trying to learn more about the county's intention for this unlicensed reentry home intended for our city. It has been clear that we are in agreement that the county's attempt to place this home without anyone's knowledge was poor due diligence and bad public policy. We had been instructed to bring our concerns to the county, which we have been doing to no avail. Collectively, we have had the same struggles attempting to interact with county staff and leaders to gain clarity and information regarding this experimental new model of housing in our community. The irreparable breakdown in communication, blatant stonewalling, and intentional omission of public documents on behalf of the county administration have been very disconcerning. I am currently working with the county labor relations regarding this and other violations of the law. We are all waiting for the county workshop, we were all waiting for the county workshop, which took place on December 20th. Unfortunately, due to the intentional omission of all the documents, all of them, that we had submitted for two and a half months, our voice was not included in that workshop. At this point, we all have had ample time to understand, try to understand what this house is and it isn't. We are asking for the city council tonight to put your support in writing, which the majority of you have already publicly voiced. The community, the council, and our District 4 Commissioner, Dave Beer, all agree that this is not the right location for this reentry home. We are asking for a resolution to be written and for a moratorium to be filed. Hopefully, if we join together, we can get the county to listen and to respect the community they are in place to serve. Please do not push this down the road. This house is slated to open March of 2023, which is the month after next. Time is of the essence, and this needs to be decided tonight. Thank you again for your dedicated leadership, and I'm confident your willingness to listen, respond, and assist your constituents will make your city very proud.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sterns. Is there anyone else that would like to come in? If that is the list of those that I had that had signed up to be heard this evening at the forum? Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Please. Good evening.
Hi. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was on. I wasn't sure. My name is Taylor Basart. I live in Bayview Circle. I wanted to come up here and speak. I know I've been in communication with some of you, and I really do appreciate the time. I do feel listened to here in the city, not like the county. I am, my husband had already stated kind of the research that I have been undertaking, and I had sent over notes, things that have been excerpted, and I really hope you take the time. You do not need to read that whole article. I've already done that for you. My biggest concern here is that the committee, the neighborhood committee that was proposed for us to take on, that is something that was dropped on us. That is not something that was asked of us. And so that is an undertaking on top of what we've already tried to uncover from the county, and trust has been broken. I feel like ever since this whole process has started, I have had to take a fine-tooth comb and read through all information and not take anything face value. And that is because the trust has been broken. So to have a committee go into a neighborhood and be part of, you know, this reentry facility, I, do I feel like my voice would be heard? No, I wouldn't. And so to feel that transparency and communication would improve after this being implemented, I feel like is a very false statement and a very false value of what our voices are. And so I want that to be considered. This reentry home is emotional distress. We've just moved here over a year, and we really do enjoy the neighborhood. But just based on everything that's been going on, this is an undertaking that our neighborhood has felt very responsible for and very protective. We want to make sure that this is going to be a neighborhood that we can invest in and not break down. And that's our biggest fear, is that this is going to be broken down because this is experimental at best. It is not proved by any data, and I want there to be a clear indication, both on the legal and the data-spoken side, to be combined in both, so that we can make an informed decision to make sure that we are safe, our neighbors are safe, and everybody else surrounding is safe. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to come before?
Hello, my name is Scott Hendrickson, 14109 Bayview Circle Northeast, Prior Lake. I think they've said it very well tonight, so I'm not going to reiterate that, other than the way that things happen. We sat in the work session, and I heard some good things there. Still frustrated at the, how slow you're getting information from the county attorney. That's very frustrating. You asked, one of you asked the question about, do they pay rent? And from the library meeting that we attended, the house is funded $200,000 from the county based on grant money and ARPA funds. And the, what I heard at that meeting was, no, they do not. So what I go to, I got, there'll be four men rotating through this house that don't pay rent and have no equity in our neighborhood, zero. So yes, they're trying to get back on their feet. I'm all in favor of that, but they have no equity in our neighborhood. The other thing was about the transparency. After the library meeting, I had an email exchange with county administrator and asked about why, why wouldn't this be communicated with the city council or the neighborhood? And she basically said, we don't have to. And then I further learned about the Shakopee House that she actually said it went so well. Well, it went so well because they didn't notify anybody, except the police, the law enforcement, as required. So my understanding is there's a new county commissioner who used to be on the Shakopee City Council. She was unaware that, for one year, she was unaware that there was a reentry home in her own city that she's a city council person on. That's kind of baffling, right? So if this happens, and this is their model, it's going to happen a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Please.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us all the opportunity to speak. And I'm kind of newer into this situation. I appreciated that.
If you could, your name and address.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'm incognito. Linda Eckelman, I live at 4198 Hidden Pond Trail. And I guess mine is more questions in terms of our ability to participate in who gets into this home. So there are all sorts of people who come out of incarceration. My husband, he had hired somebody who had been in jail for murder, but it was because he was in a fight, the guy fell and hit his head. So, you know, a person who should be given every opportunity. So, you know, that's going to be different than maybe somebody who's committed multiple murders on purpose. What are the types of people that we want to have in our neighborhood? We've talked about sex offenders. I'm not up to date on all of that, but this is a neighborhood? Absolutely. No pedophiles should be allowed. Are we going to, as a, you know, city council, can you guys be coming forth and saying, you put this upon us, we are the taxpayers. The county works for us. We should be able to say, who are the types of people who enter into this home? And then what recourse do we have if this is a failure? What is considered a failure that we can pull the plug? And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming before us this evening. Any others? Seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and bring the forum to a close, and actually, if I can, not if I can, I'd like to hand this over to Mr. Weddle to really encapsulate comments around this home. Many here that attended the workshop, but we have those that have not attended the workshop. So if you would, go ahead and put a ribbon on some of what we heard this evening and what our actions will be as a council and as a city.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and members of the audience. So, yeah, thank you all for coming this evening, and thank you for your comments. The common theme that we've heard a lot was just the process in which this house was rolled out, the lack of involvement from the neighborhood, the lack of involvement from the city, and foreknowledge of what was being proposed and how this house was going to be used. As the mayor mentioned, we had a work session earlier this evening on this very topic. There are a couple of legal avenues. We are still trying to understand that we don't have clear decisions on yet because we're still lacking information. One of them being how this house would or would not fall in alignment with our existing short-term rental ordinance. So that is still yet to be determined. We're working with the county attorney to get copies of the contractual materials that will be used for the operation of this house. The other would be a discussion on whether or not this house needs to be licensed or not through the state. So those are some. So those are some legal discussions we're still having and are ongoing, and we're going to continue to have with the, the county attorney and with county staff. In the meantime, the city council did direct staff this evening to put together a letter to the county outlining the city's desire to use this house for a different purpose. We've had discussions with the county on having this house used as a home for a homeless family, or home, or families in transition, rather than it be a reentry home, and the city is not denying that there's a need for facilities to help people that are coming out of the prison system, but this particular location, and particularly the way this process was executed, was not done in a way that we saw as appropriate, and the city would recommend to the, the county board that they reconsider and reuse it for this other purpose. So that letter will be sent to the, the county in the following days.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Waddell, and I guess all I would add to that is, the letter right now would stand to be signed by each member of the city council. The other piece that came up in workshop I'd like to share is the desire to find a soft landing here, absent pursuit and expenditure on a legal pathway. Pick your legal pathway. Either one is going to be time-consuming, it's resources, and to me, it, it, I'm struggle personally with turning loose resources in that regard, when it is to our county partner, or with our county partner. So that's all I would add on that. With that, council, it is now time to approve the agenda before us this evening, I would entertain a motion on the agenda this evening. So moved, Burkhardt?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Burkhardt to approve the agenda as submitted, a second by Councilmember Churchill, all those in favor say aye. Aye, that motion carries. That brings us to meeting minutes, we have two meeting minutes before us. Can we approve these in one motion? Excellent. So we have the approval of the December 5th, 2022 city council meeting minutes, and approval of the December 19th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Counsel, if there's no revisions, modifications to those minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Braid to approve, second by Councilmember Burkhardt, all those in favor say aye, and I know, aye?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lake?
Abstain.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to the consent agenda, and what I'd like to do is turn this over to City Manager Waddell to entertain, introduce both the consent agenda topic, as well as those items before us on the tonight's agenda, so, Manager Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. So our consent agenda is for those items that are considered routine or non-controversial, that are placed all together on the consent agenda. So unless the, the mayor or counselor asks for an item to be removed, all items on the consent agenda are approved under a single motion, second, and a vote. If the council or the mayor asks for an item to be removed for separate consideration, it would be placed under item 11 tonight on the, on the agenda. So with that, the, tonight's consent agenda consists of the following. Approval of the claims listing, approval of the 2023 city council meeting schedule, approval of the November 2022 treasurer's report, a resolution electing the non-waiver statutory municipal tort liability limits and declining excess liability insurance coverage, annual city council appointments, a resolution delegating authority to pay claims and make electronic fund transfers, a resolution authorizing preparation of a feasibility report and work order for the 2024-2025 pavement management project, city project number 2024-01, resolution approving the purchase policy updates, resolution approving a preliminary plat to be known as Radamacher's second edition, approval of the November animal control services report, approval of the November 2022 building permit summary report, approval of the 2023 massage therapist license renewals, and finally, approval of the 2023 tobacco license holders.
Excellent, thank you so much, Manager Waddell. Counsel, are there any items before us on the consent agenda that you would ask be removed and undertaken under item 11 on our agenda? I would actually like to have item 6M, approval of the 2023 tobacco license holders to be pulled from the consent agenda and taken up under item 11. Any other changes, council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on approval of those items remaining. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Braid, a second by Councilmember Lake, to approve the consent agenda items A through L, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Counsel, are there any comments that you would like to make on those items that we just approved? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move along to item 11 on our agenda, which is to discuss to remove consent agenda items, as it was I that requested that the tobacco license holders be removed. I really just have two questions. One is I'd like, Manager Waddell, to please give us a summary of compliance checking on existing tobacco license holders. I know we do our periodic compliance checking, and I'd like to understand how our license holders did in 2022.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. So we have nine existing tobacco license holders, and they are subject to random compliance checks. We typically do two a year, and our most recent one was just last month. Eight out of our nine passed, we did have one of our license holders, which was Prior Lake Tobacco and Vape, did not pass the, the compliance check, so they were cited, they were fined in accordance with state statute, they have subsequently paid their, their fine, but now, in essence, they're on the clock. If you have three compliance failures within a 36-month period, the city would have the ability to suspend or revoke their license.
And, and Manager Waddell, that compliance check, check for sale of these products to A?
Underage.
Underage, thank you. And again, I, I just, and counsel, I don't know if you have any additional comment, but this is a council that has been very concerned with health in our youth. Both the action we took in regards to flavored vapes, as well as the action we took with a moratorium around certain edibles that were made legal by the state legislature, and so I'm appreciative of both the compliance checking, as well as the enforcement, and the fact that we are moving forward with this one license holder, and that, that's all I wanted to bring to the record. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move right us along to Councilmember, oh...
So we actually still have to vote on that?
Oh, we must move, oh, yes, see how quick that was. So again, indeed, what we're looking for is the approval of the 2023 tobacco license holders, counsel, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 tobacco license.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Braid, a second by Councilmember Burkhardt, to approve those license holders, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. That does bring us to council member liaison updates, council member reports, and to our tradition, start to the left, Councilmember Victor Lake?
I have just been assigned, so no allays.
Outstanding. Councilmember Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the work session for the Scott County reentry house on December 20th, and I had my agenda review on the 3rd.
Thank you. Councilmember Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Give me one second to pull this up. On December 20th, attended the Scott County reentry home workshop, on December 20th, at a Highway 169 Quarter Coalition Meeting, on December 22nd, a suburban transit association meeting, and my agenda review on December 30th. I also had a lunch meeting with Commissioner Beer regarding the reentry home, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Burkhardt. Councilmember Braid?
Mayor, members of the council, first, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. On 12:30, I attended my agenda review, I also had numerous calls with council, or Commissioners Beer and Wolf in regards to the transitional housing. I would also like to congratulate Counselor Churchill on her reelection, and Councilmember Lake to his election to office. As you both know, we live in a great community filled with great people, and I'm looking forward to working with every council member to represent the, the residents and the businesses the way they deserve in the upcoming year, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Counsel Braid. I have nothing to report. Manager Waddell?
I have nothing further to add this evening either.
Excellent, with that, that brings us to item 14 on our agenda.
I would move to adjourn. Is that the next item?
That would be the one, I'll, I'll second that motion, although, counsel, we do need to take a picture before we depart. So we have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, the meeting stands adjourned at 7:40 PM.